Good evening. Welcome to the May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Winchester Select Board Meeting. My name is Rich Mucci. I'm the Chair of the Winchester Select Board. With me this evening is Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members Michelle Pryor and Michael Bettencourt. John Fallon is on assignment in Ireland this week, so he will not be joining us, but we wish him well. We're going to start, we have a busy agenda, we're going to start by calling up our friends at the Winchester Housing Authority that are here. Come on up, have a seat. We have a joint meeting to consider an interim Housing Authority Commissioner position. Good evening. Thank you all for joining us. I don't know if you want to call your meeting to order?
I will.
Okay.
I'll call the meeting to order. And shall I name who's in attendance?
Yes, please.
Okay. We have Brenda Kojinski, sorry, Mary Lou Bigelow, Catherine Boyle, and myself, June McGinnis.
Great.
Chairman.
Thank you all for joining us. We're here to consider the application of James Harris to join you. James is here. Come on up, James, you could sit in this chair to the side here where it says, Mr. Fallon.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
So the way we typically conduct these hearings is we just allow the applicant to say a few words about himself, and then we had the benefit of receiving his application in our packets and then allowing it, both groups, to ask questions, and then we can have a discussion and a vote, if that's okay.
My name is James Harris. I live on East Street. I rent one unit in a two-family from my grandfather. It's actually the house he grew up in. I lived there with my fiancee, Amanda. I'm thirty. I grew up in Arlington. I'm soon to be a graduate of UMass Amherst on Memorial Day weekend.
Graduation.
Thank you. You know, and I'm interested in joining the Housing Authority because it's my goal to get more involved in the community here and get involved in the town, and it just seemed like a good way to do that. And I know Denise, who's part of the Housing Authority, and she thought I'd be a good fit, so I sent in the application, and hopefully you guys think I'm a good fit, too.
Did you have some family history on the house you were thirty?
I do. My grandfather and his family have been living here since like the nineteen twenties, I think. They lived where the high school is now, and the house that I'm living in is where he grew up with his thirteen siblings. His name is Comita, C-O-M-I-T-A. His name's John. He's ninety-three. He worked at the hospital for forty-five years. He recently retired, so he's loving getting out in the garden and seeing a lot of the grandkids and so forth.
Thirteen, I would imagine there's
Oh, yeah.
A lot.
There's a lot of
A lot of activity.
Big reunions.
Any members have any questions? On the Select Board, at least?
Do you have any sort of goals in joining the Housing Authority? Anything you'd like to sort of focus on or any particular area of interest?
Well, I was interested in maybe pursuing a career somehow in the public sector. I'm not sure how that would unfold going forward, but when this opportunity arose, it seemed like a good way to maybe check out, you know, local government, look how public work can go, and Denise thought I'd be a good fit, like I said, so figured why not take a shot at it and give it my best.
Other questions for any members?
Just want to say thank you for your willingness to serve on the Housing Authority. It's a really important position for the community, so, and you got a tough bunch here, so you're gonna Best of luck to you. Congratulations on your graduation as well. My oldest daughter's gonna be starting at UMass Amherst in the fall, so.
Go ahead, man.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you for applying, and I also grew up in Arlington, so.
Nice, there you go.
Let's just
Take it over. Your only transplant. Any questions from any members of the Housing Authority Commissioners?
No. Jim sat in on our meeting last, last week just to get a feel, to make sure it was something he would like, and, you know, we had a great rapport, and I think it would be nice to have somebody new and maybe some fresher eyes.
Sure.
Because all ours are getting a little tired.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, you know, a different perspective, a renter in town, you know, certainly young, ambitious, you know, so definitely be a great addition. So if there's no other question, any discussion? Hearing none. If somebody wanted to make a motion, we could take a joint vote. Great. So Kathy Boyle nominates him. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. Mary Lou, thank you. So I think you can, do you want to poll your members first?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I thought that you just did.
So just call off and they'll tell you how they're gonna vote.
Oh, okay. Brenda?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. And then the Select Board, Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Anything else you need to do, Patty?
No.
You did it right?
You did it right.
All right, great. And thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.
Want to close your meeting?
Yes.
Bring that meeting to a close.
Let's bring this meeting to a close.
Thank you. But James, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Good luck, good luck. Congratulations on your graduation.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Really excited.
Good.
Is that cool?
Yes.
Thanks, Warren.
Okay, sounds good. I'll look forward to the email. Thank you. All right, keeping things moving, we'll do the acceptance of donations.
And we accept with gratitude to ARPA Stabilization Grants to the Recreation Department, April disbursement in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents to be used for the RAB Kids Connection, and the other in the amount of five thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents to be used for the Lunch After School program.
Second?
You have to, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, it passes.
We accept with gratitude donations of one thousand five hundred dollars each from the Pirani and Wiley Group Leading Edge Real Estate, and five hundred from the McLaren team to the Recreation Department for expenditures at the Pacorlos Tennis Courts.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, it passes.
We accept with gratitude an in-kind donation of a lockable information board from the Winchester Tennis Association to the Recreation Department.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, passes.
We accept with gratitude donations of sixty dollars from anonymous donations to the Recreation Department for the Neighbors Helping Neighbors Scholarship Account.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passes.
We accept with gratitude an in-kind donation from Gina DeLisandro to the Conservation Commission for the Invasive Species Clearing to be formed by Parteri Ecological Services at Wetch Pond in the vicinity of the pond outlet.
Before we, you can second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, just before, this is all set with Conservation Commission, I read everything.
My understanding that they're all
Yes, actually Elaine approached me and I have time informed me that Gina was going to be sending me that email.
Okay.
And so they completely a hundred percent support.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes as well. All right, moving on, we'll go to the Town Managers Report. Beth?
Thank you. I have two appointments this evening. First, in accordance with Section four dash two B of the Town Charter, and in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Department of Personal Administration, Civil Service, and as permitted by Chapter seven oh eight of the Acts of nineteen forty-one, as amended, I've made the following promotional appointment in the prime department of Paul Driscoll from Wilmington to Lieutenant, and I respectfully request that the board vote to waive the fifteen day appointment period.
Move that we waive the fifteen day appointment period to appoint Paul Driscoll to Lieutenant.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to Paul.
And second, I'm very pleased to report that in accordance with Section four dash two B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Engineering Department to Matt Schuman of Somerville to the Town Engineer position, and I respectfully requested the board vote to waive the fifteen day appointment period.
Move that we waive the fifteen day appointment period to appoint Matt Schuman to Town Engineer.
Second?
Sure, you want us to do this? Sure you don't like both roles? For all those that don't know, our Town Manager has been serving as the Town Engineer as well. Eighteen years you've been the Town Engineer?
I've worked here for eighteen years. I was the Assistant Town Engineer for six years.
Assistant for what? Only been in here?
For twelve years.
This is kind of like the end of an era.
That's right.
You sure you want us to do it? All right, we'll do it. Congratulations, Beth, on finding a replacement.
Yeah, no, I'm excited. Matt was, for those who don't know, Matt was the Assistant Town Engineer in here in Winchester for fifteen years. So he's worked in the city of water town for the past nine years, so I'm happy to, happy to welcome him to Winchester.
Great.
I want to thank everybody in the Engineering Department and also the DPW who's stepped up to support all the various projects we have going on while I've been up here.
Did we actually just vote on that?
No, we're gonna vote now. With that being said, you seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes, great. Congratulations to Matt. We look forward to having you onboard. We're looking forward to, we're leaving Bathover in double duties. Appreciate everyone filling in because it does take a village.
I've been ready and dropped my desk.
But no, as we have these vacancies, it's really been great to see our staff step up and, you know, fill voids in those areas. So thank you for everyone who's done that. Keep going, Beth, I think you got more in your report.
Sure, yeah, so speaking of personnel matters, just a few additional items. Both our Building Commissioner Al Wile and our Treasure Collector Sheila Tracy have let me know they're planning to retire towards the end of this fiscal year, so they've both been with the Town, Town for many years and appreciate their years of service to our community. They've been, both done a great job in their positions. We've posted both of those positions. We hope to start interviews in the next few weeks. The Town Planner position hasn't been re-advertised, and the planning board has reconvened our search base, and I'm hopeful that they'll be conducting interviews and be able to make a recommendation of appointment to that position in the next few years as well. Just moving on to some other updates, as you all are aware, we secured additional funding for the Lake Street Bridge project at a springtime meeting, and we have awarded our contract to Kodiak Corporation. The Town is coordinating with both National Grid and Kodiak. National Grid has a gas main that goes across the bridge. It has to be relocated. And so they are, we expect them to be out there, National Grid to be out there in mid-June, starting that work. And then unfortunately, we are hoping to have the bridge closed and work starting right after school, but out, because of the delays that we're seeing with our pre-cast orders, they are not able to secure delivery on the pre-cast structure until mid-September. So under their contract, they have a hundred and twenty days total allowed for the road closure. So we expect that they'll close the road fully in mid-July and then probably reopen it in sometime in early to mid-November, although we're working with National Grid to try to move things around to tighten up their schedule. That would hopefully reduce that hundred and twenty day window, but at this point, that's come at a timeframe looking around, so. Obviously disappointing, it's, you know, we were hoping to have the majority of the work done over the summer, so this is just the schedule of, you know, another month or so into the school year, unfortunately. Any questions on that?
Lot of questions. No, I mean, you know, obviously I don't need to tell you or anyone that's listening that this is a main artery for this town, especially for the school traffic. I'm sure we'll have to coordinate with the schools and make sure the buses, you know, can find alternate routes. I understand we'll have the pedestrian access.
Right, so we have the pedestrian first, I'll be going in.
Okay, good. But, you know, obviously whatever we can do to tighten the schedule would be great. I know, I see the chief here. Obviously details and signage and things like that, you know, we'll need to coordinate just because it's, you know, with other projects going on as well, this potentially has, you know, could be a nightmare, so.
Yeah, it can be challenging, for sure.
So we just need to, you know, make sure we get the word out, and especially when school comes back into session in September, because I think that'll be the biggest problem. Any questions from anyone else? Is that what you were thinking?
Steph is thinking of bus routes to schools, that's for sure, so.
Yeah. So for anyone, in happier news, anyone who's been through town recently, you can see that the Inca Fair started moving in across the Jink slot, so we'll have some road closures coming up this week. The Jink slot will be fully closed starting tomorrow, and there'll be some road closures starting on Wednesday, continuing through Saturday. The fair opens Friday at five, or four?
Five is standing to do.
Yeah. Just a couple other quick notes. The Network for Social Justice is conducting a lived experience survey to understand occurrences of hate crimes, indiscriminate marginalization, and harassing behavior. You can find a link to that survey on the Town's website if you're interested in participating. The Sanctuary at Winchester, which is the two forty B projects that are currently under construction, one at Cambridge Street across from Whole Foods, and one on River Street, is currently marketing their units for the affordable, the affordable units. They will be holding a lottery on June fourteenth, and the application deadline for that lottery is the end of May, May thirty-first. So you can find additional information on the Town's website regarding that. Just very quickly, there's a lot, anyone who's tried to drive around town these days, you know, there's a lot going on construction-wise. We have ever sores three forty-five KV project ongoing, which will be in this evening, or Friday, additional update. The one fifteen project is wrapping up. The pavement work has been completed, and we expect them to be striping the bike lanes on Main Street between Sims Corner and Bedford Line in the coming weeks. The North Road to Dania Project, I'm very happy to say it has been completed, and really it's a, it's a once-in-generation project, and so I think I'd like to just commend our staff and our contractor, T Ford, who just did an excellent job out there. Um, just a couple other quick notes. The Network for Social Justice is conducting a lived experience survey to understand occurrences of hate crimes and discriminatory marginalization and harassing behavior. You can find a link to that survey on the Town's website if you're interested in participating. The Sanctuary at Winchester, which is the two forty B projects that are currently under construction, one at Cambridge Street across from Whole Foods and one on River Street, is currently marketing their units for the affordable, the affordable units. They will be holding a lottery on June fourteenth, and the application deadline for that lottery is the end of May, May thirty-first. So you can find additional information on the Town's website regarding that. Just very quickly, there's a lot, anyone who's tried to drive around town these days, you know, there's a lot going on construction-wise. We have ever-source three forty-five KV project ongoing, which will be in this evening or Friday, additional update. The one fifteen project is wrapping up. The pavement work has been completed and we expect them to be striping the bike lanes on Main Street between Sims Corner and Medford Line in the coming weeks. The North Rose Ward Damp Project, I'm very happy to say, it has been completed, and really, it's a, it's a once-in-generation project, and so I think I'd like to just commend our staff and our contractor, T. Ford, who just did an excellent job out there in the communities in that area taking a walk. It looks, it looks fantastic. So happy to, happy to have that project completed and excited to see the vegetation grow and, and make it look a little bit less like a construction site in the, in the coming months. Transportation project is ongoing. The Incinerator Building was demolished at the end of April, and final paving is scheduled for early June, weather permitting. Parker's work is ongoing to make that school ready for students to be, to be starting there in some time near soon. Site work is wrapping up and the modular costumes are scheduled to be delivered in late June. We have, we currently have Gail Associates working on the four roof evaluations for the schools that we've been, the, the two school buildings and two municipal buildings. They actually just did their drone flyover last week of those, of those library, of those various groups, including the library. We're also looking to do, to start the initial evaluation for the Town Hall and Library Window Project that was funded, was board-funded using ARPA funds. We have a bunch of projects to be coming out to bid, including a Ned Black, Ned Black LED neck replacement project, McDonald Field Pump Station project, Washington Cross Street Bridge repairs, and the Winchester High School drainage improvements. And then we have a bunch of projects that will be starting up later this year, including a water quality project between Warner Ponds, McCall School Masonry Project, Woodside Road, Wildwood Street Construction Project, which will happen, start work in late June or early July, Rocker School Electrical Work, South Rose Ward Damp Aeration, which is board-funded using ARPA funds, and then also the Town Hall Fire Alarm. So a lot of, no shortage of construction projects happening in Winchester these days. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that the Household, Household Hazard Waste Collection Day is scheduled for Saturday, June tenth, from nine AM to noon at the DPW facility. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Beth?
Yeah, can I ask, the Cross Street Bridge, is that at Cross and Forest?
Yes, at the, yeah. So we're coordinating with EverSource on the Washington Street Bridge at the Everton River and the Cross Street Bridge at the Everton River. Those projects do not require the bridge to be fully closed, so we'll be able to have alternating traffic during construction.
Are we looking at doing those, both those bridges this summer?
That's the plan. And the timing with the Cross Street, I think, will work out well with EverSource because we'll be within kind of their work zone, so we'll all make a big mess at the same time. We just need to make sure we're coordinating with their.
So I've got a question on paving, putting the bike lanes in from Sims Corner to the Effort Line. Any, is that, like, in the next, I know you said in the coming weeks, any, like, next two weeks, before the end of the month?
Yeah, two weeks.
Well, they need to be.
It's hard without lines.
I, I actually, I live there, and I actually was driving from Sims Corner and saw a car pass another car between Sims Corner and Chardon Road, and I was like, behind them, what the heck? It's a, you know, all of a sudden, it's a two-lane road. They literally went in the middle and passed the car.
Will that result in any road closures or anything?
Uh, I don't think so, no.
At night?
It'd be nice to get those crosswalks back, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. And Woodside, that will be, when we do that, that's not gonna result in any closures, it's gonna be a lane restriction?
I believe that will be a lane restriction, yep.
And that's like a month's worth of work?
Maybe, I mean, there may be some, you know, as they're kind of setting large pieces of curb or something, there may be some temporary times where that, that intersection has to be closed, but not for the full duration of construction.
And that's like a month-long project?
Yes, I think six to eight weeks is generous, but that kind of isn't really too much.
Who, do we know who the contractor is on that yet?
We do. Forget their name.
All right. Any other questions for Beth on her report? We're gonna cover some of this in our agenda tonight, but. Great. A lot of construction. Moving on, public comment at this point. Open it up to anyone in the public who'd like to make a comment. You, I'd ask you to come up, introduce yourself, sit down, and we give you three minutes to discuss whatever it is you want to talk about.
May we proceed to the, for public comment?
Sure, come on up. How are you?
Good thanks for.
Good to hear you.
Just if you could all just introduce.
This is for you first.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
You've already received a copy, but just for reference.
Sure. Take this in. So if you all just want to introduce yourselves, just state your address and then feel free to go.
I'm Mary Corville. I lived at nineteen Ridgefield Road for thirty years.
I'm Caitlin Musto. I live at twelve Priss of the Lane.
I'm Julie Gustafson. I'm at twenty-one Ridgefield Road.
We're here tonight to discuss the redesign of the Sims Corner Rotary and Intersection, which includes Bacon Street, Grove Street, Main Street from Winchester Center and Main Street towards Medford. And you can see it right there, Julie has the map. The design of the Sims Corner, the design of the Sims Corner Rotary and Intersection is a hazard and poses a danger to both motorists and pedestrians. The intersection and the rotary are badly laid out.
First one, sorry, directions.
The main problems are that it's a small rotary, which is not located in the middle of the intersection and does not act like a rotary. It has a non-working blinking light and no speed bumps or rules to ensure that cars slow down while in the rotary or approaching the crosswalks. Main Street is traveled at high speeds without any awareness of the rotary. Cars cut me off as I exit the rotary without noticing me, and they're not paying any attention. They also cut me off when I, while they're speeding straight from Bacon, continuing onto Main. It's just like a racetrack, right past the rotary. No one even knows it's there. Additionally, the crosswalks are terrifying, and I'm talking from personal experiences, I think we all are. The crosswalk at Grove Street cannot be seen by cars turning from Bacon. I tend to cross just outside the crosswalk to be sure the cars can see me. At the end of Ridgefield, where Main Street is crossed, there's a crosswalk that cars sometimes ignore, or I may even say frequently ignore. Schoolchildren and mothers with strollers frequently cross here and have almost been hit several times by cars speeding through Main Street. The same is true at all the crosswalks at that intersection, and I would urge you to read the testimonials. It's at the end of the document where many people talk about their close calls. We do not feel that the proposed striping plan does anything to address the safety issues. Physical changes are required. You know, they're running right over the painted crosswalks, I, you know, I don't know. So here's what we are suggesting. Firstly, enlarge and move the rotary so that it's in the center of the intersection and it acts like a rotary. Enlarge the street corners to force the cars to slow and enter the rotary, like has been done at all the other streets, just to, you know, squeeze them down into it. Make the islands at each entrance to the rotary larger, and then again, squeezing the cars to slow down, or just, you know, teeny-weeny little things now. Add speed tables in all directions as the cars approach the rotary. Add small crosswalks in the islands, crosswalk islands, in the center of all crosswalks for people to wait for the cars to stop. Install flashing crosswalk lights, like we have down near Gen, and add a crossing guard for school at appropriate hours. As of today, there are three hundred and thirty-five petition names in support of these improvements. It's a live Google document that we have online at the link, and people are signing it every day. We also have twenty-four testimonials at the end of people's own experiencing, including two from eighth graders who were almost grazed today. We respectfully request that this intersection redesign be moved up to high priority on your list of traffic improvements before someone is seriously injured or killed, as was the case when the light was installed at the intersection of Everett Ave and Cambridge Street. We do not want a tragedy as what just happened last week in Andover when a six-year-old was killed in a crosswalk in a busy intersection. Watertown has done the exact same thing at Common and Orchard Street intersections. I drive through that frequently. There was nothing there before, and I can tell you, it runs smoothly. I, I stopped, I got out of my car, I took pictures, I took videos. It's amazing, and it's just like our intersection. There are five streets coming in to this busy thing, and thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Not at this point. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. Certainly, it's been delivered to staff. They'll take the first crack at going through it, and I think they've actually already been in touch.
Everyone's received it.
Yeah.
All departments have received.
So they'll, they'll look at it, review it.
The request and the testimonials.
And then it will be, go through the process. I think as part of the EverSource project, Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you just mentioned it, there's gonna be some striping that goes in there now, and, you know, we'll see how that works. That's gonna be in the next couple of weeks, as you just said, and then.
Striping has been there in the past, though, and we still have all these testimonials and urgent need to make a change. Stripings aren't doing much. Because of the design, it's not safe. So we're looking to speed tables at a minimum for the interim, something to slow cars down. We have, it's thirty-five miles an hour coming up Main through Bacon, Bacon through Main. It's fast.
Through here.
It's, it's not safe.
If the rotary, if the rotary was where it was supposed to be.
It's like an auto bond lane, it's straight through.
People would have to.
This is, this, you know, as good as we have right now for this meeting, but from Bacon to Main, you can see the rotary isn't even a factor. It's a straight shot and it's wide. And so it's, people stop here to let my kid go, and then a car thinks it's a double lane and passes the stopped car, continues on, and almost hits us. That's been happening several times on the way to school, on the way home from school, me walking my dog. It doesn't matter when or where. It's, it's, they think it's a straight chute. They don't think it's a rotary, and it's a wide lane. So paintings aren't gonna work there. We need speed bumps at a minimum, maybe flashers. I know that's a whole different thing, but.
I think that.
Something.
Sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
I met you all last month. I represent the Children's Own School. I'm chair of the Parent Committee for the school and a board member there as well. I appreciate the time that you spent with me last month. I'm not gonna talk about my specific concerns really into the school, but I will talk about the fact that Tool recommended a school zone, and the school zone was recommended to begin around Chardon Road and end around Townway, South Gateway. Do you know, Michelle, you live right near us, right? And my concern right now is the speed limit coming from Gen down Bacon Street is twenty-five miles per hour. You hit the rotary continuing on towards Medford, it slowly jumps up to thirty-five until you get to Chardon where it will be twenty, and then it will change again at South Gateway to thirty-five, will change again at the Medford Line to twenty-five. So in a half a mile line, it's six different speed limits.
Which nobody pays attention.
Which nobody pays attention to anyway, but even if it's post, it's confusing. So I understand it's a state road. I understand there's murkiness as far as trying to get approval or under the, like, whose jurisdiction it is as far as changing a speed limit, but the thirty-five mile per hour is a major concern for their cause and for mine as well. And it's something that I think there needs to be a traffic study about. When Tool did the traffic study for us in front of our school, the average speed limit in both directions was thirty-seven miles per hour, which is just, I mean, if you think of the Coen Division, everybody's seen that graphic here at this table, right, of if there's an impact on a child, like there was in Andover last week. It's just catastrophic at that speed. So what do we need to do to get this on the agenda for a future meeting to engage Tool to do a review of this intersection?
I think the first thing is that we need our staff to look at it. This will probably be one of the first tests of our new Town Engineer.
Yeah.
When he starts, but that'll be the first step, and then we kind of follow their lead.
I'm wondering if he did the rotary in Watertown.
On a scale of this, this would be a capital project, which has a whole process, that we have a capital planning committee, staff puts forward projects to the capital planning committee for funding. So this would, we put forward a request for design funding, and then it would go through the capital process.
Yep.
They are able to fund it, it would either go to fall time meeting or springtime meeting. So I just want to be honest about the timeline we're talking about here. This isn't like a.
Could there be a phase A and B or a C, D, whatever, so we can address some insurance, some immediate needs, which are to slow down with some easy speed tables or something other. I'm not a engineer or a traffic person, but I've seen those get put up all the, all the, all over town recently. Maybe something as simple as a table, just for now.
On Woodside were the culmination of five years of work to get those out there. So I'm just, I'm just trying to be honest about the timeline, and maybe we could do something on a temporary basis, but.
I would be grateful if you could think about something temporarily as a immediate measure, because it's, you'll see in our, in our, in our request and testimonials, it's.
Yeah, it's getting bad.
It's not safe, and a paint won't do it.
Do the markings that have been put forth from Tool at the rotary include, like, directions on how to use the rotary? Because I'm thinking of other rotaries I've seen, that Watertown one is an example, and it's, there's painting on the ground, which is not gonna fix our problem, but it's a quick first step towards a solution.
And so the markings that are proposed are really to address the issue that you guys raised previously, which is that people tend to go around, if a car stops for the crosswalk, there's enough space to go around. So we're really trying to make it clear that there's only one.
One lane.
So now it's striped.
And we appreciate that effort.
Twelve foot, everything is striped except for a twelve-foot.
Yep.
Drive lane going up to that crosswalk at Ridgefield, just to try to, again, it's better to have that done with curbing, but at least on a, you know, temporary manner, we can do it with pavement markings to try to reinforce that.
Well, we appreciate that at a minimum, absolutely. We see the effort and we are grateful for it.
We do think a study needs to be done, though, so we're actually there counting traffic and speed and, and what they're doing to.
Yeah, so like I said, our, our staff will look at it and, you know, it will go through the process.
Thank you.
Great.
You know, if there's temporary stuff that are recommended, we could certainly consider it.
That would be great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll move to our business agenda. I'm gonna start with the EverSource three forty-five line. I think everyone's here from EverSource. EverSource, EverSource here?
Everybody here.
Chief, do you want to join us? Bob, you want to come up, or? Bob here for it. EverSource, come on up, Bob. Bring a seat up. Don't be bashful. Come on up, guys.
Can you use that one with whoever's shack it that is? Take that, too.
No, I'm, I'm, let me sit to up first.
Thank you all for joining us. If you just want to remind us your roles in this project, it'd be helpful.
Sure. So, good evening. I'm Mike Hager, the project manager for EverSource for the three forty-five KV movement to Wakefield line. To my left is Jeff Sisseron. Jeff is helping me out on a project management basis, kind of focusing on Town of Winchester and making sure we follow up in all the loose ends and, and keep things going in, within Winchester. To my right is Miles Lang Kennedy from our community outreach group, and.
Jason, any questions?
So we're here just to give you an update on, on where we are with, with the project and what to expect for this year, and then answer any questions you have. So, you know, through last year, we were able to complete all the work along Washington Street, and then we made the turn on Cross Street. We have Duck Bank pretty much complete, complete almost up to the Far Street intersection. We're, we're a few feet short of that. So our focus this year is from, from Far Street down to the Woburn Town Line. Currently, we're working, this slide from last week shows Manhole Three, which is the last one to be installed, not only within Winchester but for the project, over right in front of green rubber. That was installed on Friday. We're in the process of restoring utilities and, and roadway in, at that Manhole location this week. And then we'll just tie the Duck Bank in a couple hundred feet to where we left off, back towards, towards Woburn. We're currently also, given our current traffic setup for that work, have a crew coming out of Manhole Four, working their way to Cleveland Road over there. And we're probably, I want to say four weeks, just to be safe, plus or minus, to kind of get to that Cleveland Road area. And then you will, then we just need to connect from Cleveland Road to the Manhole from there. We also have a small section of Duck Bank, Highland Park View to River Street, that we need to come back in. There's probably four or five hundred feet of Duck Bank in there. We have to connect up to two ends there, and then the large, the other large outstanding action would be the. And then the large, uh, the other large outstanding, uh, action would be the, um, HDD, um, over by the MBTA Bridge in Davidson Park over there. Our plan, uh, you know, our, our, our schedule has us getting the, um, project complete and that line, uh, in service by the end of this year. Uh, in order to do that, uh, I have, I have a goal of trying to get all that civil construction, Duck Bank work done by September, leaving me a, a few weeks after that, uh, for a cable pulling and splicing crew to come behind and make those final connections, uh, on those last, uh, work areas there, uh, so that I could, be ready for outage and, and some final testing of that cable in, in the middle of, uh, November.
So I'm going to, if I could just jump in, when do you plan to do the HDD two and three work? That's, that's going to require the bridge to be shut down, right?
It will not. So last year when we came here and gave you an update, you know, the, the plan that we had with a, with a jack and bore approach, um, had shut down to that roadway twenty-four seven for an extended period of time. Uh, we have gone back and come up with, uh, uh, different, uh, construction technique, um, horizontal directional drill. We'll still have two pits, although they'll be a little shallower, they'll be a little further apart, um, probably six hundred and fifty feet apart. And with that approach and, and, uh, type of, um, operations going on, uh, we have a traffic management plan that will allow us to keep one lane of alternating traffic around those locations during the workday and to have the roadway opened, uh, after hours and weekends.
And when is that going to start?
We have a crew penciled to start that work in June, however, um, I have some outstanding approvals that I need before I can go out and get a firm date. So we're still working with, uh, DPW and staff on the overall layout plan and trying to resolve some, um, comments that we have from staff. Uh, we have to have the Conservation Commission, uh, give us an amended order of conditions over there. I don't want to speak for them, but, uh, we, we, we believe that from a conservation perspective, we have met their, uh, uh, concerns and addressed those. I, I think they're just waiting for feedback from either staff or, or others, uh, that they're okay with the overall plan before they take some action. And, uh, our plan also does, um, you know, to minimize the amount of stuff, area we have to disrupt down around the park, uh, we, we need the select board to grant us an extension on use of the laydown area we have up, uh, that you gave us last year, um, up, um, on Washington Street, as well as, uh, the ability to lay out, uh, some of the pipe that will be pulled through there along the, um, southern end of that, that bike path there. So if, if we have those approvals in hand, we're, we're prepared to get a fixed start date from our folks and, and go to it.
And how long will that operation at the bridge take approximately, how many weeks?
I think that's in the eight to ten week overall kind of range. Some of that is prep work up front, you know, the actual operations of, of, uh, you know, doing the, the, there's just two pipe bores that have to take place in there. So the operation of doing those bores and pulling the, uh, um, um, pipe and conduit suddaire is probably three weeks, may, maybe a, a smidgen more than that, but there's some prep work of establishing the pits and the work zones, uh, that take place prior to the actual drilling operation.
And will that be going on simultaneously while the crews are still working up, up on Cross Street at MH Three and Four?
I would expect the Manhole Three to Four location to be winding down by, uh, the time we would be ramping up here. There might be a little overlap, um, um, in, in time and to, if, if there, we can manage traffic during that, then I, uh, yes, they would be happening at the same time, but if, um, if we can't come up with a suitable traffic management plan, uh, then we're going to have to, you know, time those so that only one happens at, at one point in time.
And I, I don't want to speak for Bob, but there are some water shutdown issues that we need to, that prevent both areas from happening at the same time.
I, I believe that we can adequately address the traffic issues, but both of those areas will require some water bypasses and I know, um, uh, staff is concerned about having two bypasses in operation at, at the same time. So we'd have to make, uh, that probably would be the limiting factor of how many, uh, work zones we can have going at one point in time.
And so I noticed at the, at the intersection of Main Street and Cross, that, so that rope is closed up there while you're doing some work, when will that end?
That's when we complete that Manhole Three to Four, uh, work, so we're, let's say we're probably four weeks away from completing that right now.
So that's going to be closed during the day for three to four weeks?
No, I, I think the biggest issue is the manholes themselves, when they go in, they have to literally take the entire street. From what I've been told today, tomorrow, and then we're going to do some paving on Wednesday, we're going to shut it down for Wednesday too, but after that, there should be lanes that are able to go through.
So we go just back to- Is that your understanding?
Yes, yes, he's, he's correct. The manhole crosses the center line, I need the whole space, it's a very large piece, I, I needed that part of the road, last week and, and until we get that restored. But once that's done, I'm just back to a five foot wide trench that we, we, we can work in a single lane with alternating traffic from there.
So this stretch of our town is a complete nightmare, okay? I got caught in it today, uh, picking up one of my kids. It, what are we doing about communication? So if I knew, for example, that the street was closed at Cross and Main and I couldn't cut through, I would never have gone down Cross Street to begin with. What are we doing to alert the public before we're at the actual closure that put me onto Loring Road, that then spit me out at Swanton Street while I sat at, you know, on Loring Road and then at a light for about twenty minutes? While, you know, two officers were trying to, you know, manage the situation, but they were vastly outnumbered at rush hour. What if anything are we doing to notify motorists about this whole area under construction? Do we have flashing signs, do we have signage on Washington Street, Main Street? Avoid the area, I mean, what, what are we doing? While this all goes on this summer?
We do have a weekly newsletter, we do, we drop door hangers, I think more signage might be helpful. But we do, before big work zones like this, someone from our field outreach team goes out there, knocks on the doors, they're invited to sign up for constant contact, we have a website. And then we do have a hotline that I tell you has been more active, um, than usual with folks and we respond to questions and complaints, but I think what I'm hearing is more signage, maybe at some of these intersections might help going forward.
So the ongoing outreach efforts where, uh, even the link, uh, link on the town website provides, for those who are looking for it, there are who, some will get to ask for direct, uh, updates, uh, every week when we send those out, but if additional signage for detours are needed to, uh, at other, alternate locations to better advise, uh, before getting there, those are easy things for us to, to pull out of a, uh, a laydown area and bring in and kind of work with the detail officer to make sure we've got the, uh, you know, proper signage at the locations that, that work most effectively.
So our town is a cut through, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, when everyone's going to the office in Burlington or ninety-three, there's a problem or something like that, and they cut through down, down through those streets, whether it's four o'clock in the afternoon, whether it's, you know, eight in the morning. I think it would be very helpful for those motorists that are not on any of these lists, and I appreciate all your outreach to the neighbors, uh, and the D are certainly living in the neighborhood can speak to that. I think it would be helpful to have those slashing lines, I mean, this is McCourt doing this project, they certainly have the equipment available.
We have equipment, if I don't have a sign, we'll get one made quickly and put it out there, yes.
This, this is a tough situation, when we've done the manholes before coming up Cross Street, we've usually had some type of a side street to be able to reroute the traffic. The problem is, is with this manhole that's closest to, you know, rubber, um, green rubber, there's really no option to get around it, you just can't, you have to.
Every side street was packed, so I think if we alert, if we're, like, for future, if we're going to do this, you know, alert people down on Cross Street, you know, don't turn down Cross Street, you know, avoid it, go down Swanton. It would help a lot of people. So I think, I mean, that's just my personal experience today picking up my eight-year-old, so, uh, I think it would help.
We'll, we'll, uh, work on that in the morning and if we need, you know, flashing signs or, or other, other stationary signs, we'll, we'll, we'll make adjustments as we're going. And again, hopefully after Wednesday, uh, we'll, we'll have better flow through there, because, uh, we'll, we'll be open to normal lane of traffic.
Okay. And then this is in conjunction with the Lake Ave project in Woburn going on, right?
That is part of our work as well, yes.
So if you're me, when is that going to wrap up?
So the story there is similar to here, uh, we're completing in the next day or two, the, the HDD we did, um, along Lake Ave, uh, so in the next couple of days, we'll be coming out of that area in, in front of the pond, working our way back to, uh, the grass area in front of our substation. Um, I'm guessing six weeks is probably what we have on the plan from that. And then once that work is complete, we need to jump back up to Arlington Street and just, um, do the, the next five hundred feet of Duck Bank on the side of the road there, uh, back to Pickering. Then, then we'll be complete. So that'll be, you know, through, through July, through July and August, we'll, we'll be doing something in there and having one lane of alternating traffic through that work zone as well.
So my concern and why I'm asking you these questions, uh, is because, I don't know if you're in the room, but we're going to be closing the Lake Street Bridge, uh, in Winchester, right by our DPW headquarters, uh, in mid-July. It's not going to open until November. So there's no easy way for people like Mike and I that live on the other side of town and we're going to come this direction to get to where we need to go. If Cross Street's taken, Lake Ave is taken, Lake Street's closed, it's just, it's tough to get here. So that's why, you know, especially in September when school starts up, we're busing, I don't know if you, you, I mean, you don't live here, so I don't expect you to know this, but the Lynch School is closing, so all those families need to get up by, um, by Parkhurst, uh, which is up on the west side of town, uh, up near the Lexington Line. So, you know, we're busing all those kids, we're going to have, you know, hopefully people take advantage of the busing we're providing, um, but it's going to be, you got people coming, trying to come down to go to the high school and the middle school, and you got people going up. Uh, so, you know, with all these closures, it's going to be, you know, hectic, uh, and, you know, I don't care what, you know, as much as we tell people, it's always a rush to get to school, uh, and to get kids to their activities when the nice weather, so anything you can do to, you know, electric signage out there, uh, you know, the newsletters are great for the neighborhood, but anything you can do in the moment when you're driving to, you know, kind of, you know, alert motorists, you know, so that they know to avoid the area, it'd be very helpful. I also noticed the crew was still working at five o'clock. I don't know what the hours are, you know, that you're supposed to be out there, maybe you do?
Yeah, we were looking to have them off at five o'clock. It all depends, sometimes they might get off a little earlier, sometimes it all depends with it buttoning up, so.
So our crew is looking to work an eight-hour day on Cross Street. Uh, we do have a restriction where we can't get on a roadway to eight-thirty, uh, to allow the morning traffic to go through there. So that will take them up to, to about four-thirty. In order to get this done, um, we have authorized McCourt to work ten-hour days if, uh, if, if it's, if the town will let them do that and there's details to do that just to, uh, and they can be productive for those extra two hours, just to shorten up the overall construction period. Hopefully that comes towards the end of the day when traffic's a little lighter in the afternoon rush versus-
Well, I'm not really sure how much lighter it would be on Cross Street, and the only reason why is because that is a, a central location for many after-school activities. We have all those after-school programs down there, we also have the community, um, soccer, um, facility down there that not only does soccer, but does other things, so just have your crews be mindful that you're all very well-intentioned and we appreciate you trying to work longer to make it go faster, but, you know, after-school, um, can be very hectic time in that area, um, as well, so, just on a normal day.
It's, it's going to be, no matter how small a work zone is, it's going to be a disruption, uh, while we're out there, we're trying to get it done in the shortest window of time, uh, as part of, you know, working with, um, you know, police department and the details to come up an effective, uh, uh, traffic management plan and if it's not working, you know, we'll, we'll have to stop and come up with something else and there are days, you know, traffic a little heavier, a little lighter on, on any, any given day and we try and make adjustments on the fly, given what the conditions are.
And maybe when you came in tonight, you noticed that there's a bunch of carnival rides out front. So this street's going to be closed, uh, for a couple of days at the end of the week, we're expecting, you know, a large, good weather, we're expecting a large presence here on Friday and Saturday, um, in our annual Inc. Affair, which is a, a big, uh, community event, so, uh, just be mindful of that, maybe on Friday, maybe quit a little early that day. Anything you gentlemen need from Eversource, you feel like you have all the information you need to do, what you both need to do?
Yeah, I mean, my only thing with the longer days, um, it's not a bad idea, once the, uh, kids are out of school and everyone kind of takes off, the town really kind of empties out a little bit, so I really wouldn't object to, um, you know, having a longer day to try to, you know, get out of there sooner.
And we've authorized Saturdays as well, if, if that's in there, and again, that's all part of the, you know, kind of coordination with town, uh, so that we're not, you know, doing it in the middle of a parade or something else, but, uh, our, our goal is to take advantage of as much work time as we have now so that we're, you know, we're not rushed in the end and we, if I can get out of here in, in August instead of September, October, you know, that's what we'd love to do.
Yeah, we like that too, that'd be great, because, uh, you're doing great work and we appreciate all you're doing, but, you know, I think as the chief says, you know, the summers, you know, Saturdays in the summer here is, is a great time to be doing work late at night, um, when school's out, it's the June, right now is our busy season and then, you know, September starting back up, so I know if, if we tell you now, maybe, you know, you can plan for it, um, and go from there.
Yes.
So, sorry to all my colleagues for asking so many questions, but, um, you know, this is something I hear about from a lot of people in the area, um, and I know, I don't know, Anthea, you live down there, if you have any to add.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, if I, if I can just ask a couple of questions, I'm going to start with, um, is Miles, or who's the appropriate contact for neighbors? I know some folks have been reaching out to Eric recently, um, but I just want to make sure that they have the right resources.
Yeah, Eric or me are fine by email, but there's, there's also a website, um, a phone number. We also have like a project mind map, so you can actually pull it up on your phone and see where the work crews are, so it can help you try to avoid them, then you can sign up for constant contact, but, um, usually the hotline or the phone number, um, is the best way.
Okay.
Because if Eric or I are not there, it's usually, we have like a twenty-four hours we have to respond, so it's kind of fail-safe.
Okay, um, and then one, um, thought which, uh, so I, I do not live on, on Washington or Cross, but I could spit and hit Washington or Cross. Um, we, we do not get outreach and so I don't know, um, if some of the businesses, uh, up, up of East Street, which is like where the, um, the pool is and gymnastics and preschool, um, making sure that, that they do receive those communications because they can then outreach to, um, people who will be coming there to let them know, um, so that if they're aware of closures, that, that they can also pass that on to, to folks. Yeah, it's like sort of where Highland View hits East Street over there, so not, not on the road, but right there, um.
So like doing some more like outreach like at East Street and George, just like getting to those neighborhoods a little deeper?
Yeah, I think it's really specifically to like the, the businesses that are, are located there, which is where when we're talking about these after-school activities, that, that's where they're happening. And then, um, I assume that the businesses that are right on Cross Street by, like, between the MBTA Bridge and Manhole Six, I mean, those are definitely a butter, so they're probably aware, but, um, just extending to that, um, a question I have around the bike path, where the, the pipes will be laid down, will that be direct, will the path still be usable or will that be directly on the path at a certain?
It'll be to the side of the path, we, we may take up some of the paved area, uh, but it was planned so that, you know, even while we're fusing pipe and, and stretching that out, um, you know, as, as we're, we're creating that seven hundred foot long piece of, of pipe there, that, um, we, we can, uh, keep the bike path open to, to people that are using it. So we'll, we'll have signage and barriers and stuff up, so we're on one side, but people can continue to use the path.
Okay, yeah, I know, I, I don't know around the timing on that, but that's a big, um, school route in the morning, so wanted to make sure that that, um, was available or that people should know about that. And the only other thing that I've heard recently and heard in the fall as well was about, um, the, the plates in the road and making sure that that placement doesn't, um, they can be very loud, as I said, I don't live on Washington Street, but when, there was a time when some of the plates were off and it, it does get very loud, especially on roads that are traveled pretty frequently at nighttime, um, so just, you know, keeping that in mind for-
That's a common issue in all projects, we, we do the best we can and contractors does what they can to make sure that they are secure and not going to rattle every now and then, you get them secure and somebody hits them in an odd angle and they, and they, they rattle and if, if it becomes a big problem, we can always call somebody in after hours to come back and take care of it. But, you know, if it rattles overnight and, and people are complaining, we hear about first thing in the morning and it becomes another point of focus, uh, at the end of the next workday.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you-
Just wanna say thank you. You know, this was never gonna be an easy project for us or for the neighborhood, and a lot of disruptions. And so, we appreciate the accommodations. I think the, the communication with the neighbors and the neighborhood, and generally for those, those big closures, I know we've got the large digital readout sign as well, just to, you know, there's a lot of signage, there's always construction, sometimes just the, the big ones saying, you know, avoid Cross Street these three days. Things like that really stand out to people, right? Because otherwise, you get stuck in it, and that, that's not a great, great way to find out about it. People get emails, they get notifications. I think there's just so much of that, that they, they, you know, they tend to see the thing that's in front of them. So, whatever we can do, we appreciate the, the hotline, the continued communication. So, thank you.
I just wanted to mention two things. So, the board has already granted them a license agreement for the Davidson Park, or sorry, the Washington Street Park area. We'll have to extend that at a future meeting, so that they can continue, continue to use that during this phase of construction. And then, they would, you'd be required to have a separate license agreement for, for this portion of the work. I'm very concerned about any damage that could be done to the bike path as part of this project, so I would wanna see how you guys are gonna be able to protect that. That bike path is less than five years old. And with the culmination of 30 years of work to get it in, so I don't wanna be repaving that, and I don't want you guys to be repaving it. So, we wanna do everything we can to protect it during whatever activities you're gonna be doing out there. And then, timeline, that's, that's probably, if, if you're saying you're gonna be starting in June, and then hopefully done by September, that's like a August timeline where you'd be laying that out. Is that what you think the schedule is here to get that in?
That, that's probably in, towards the middle of, of, of that, that timeframe, that we would need that in there. Because we'd have to pull those, lay those pipes out, then pull them through, then we're back into restoration. So, yeah, it, middle, the middle to the end of, of that, that work window is when we would be needing that for two or three weeks to.
Okay. So, I think what we just don't wanna see is like, school starts September 7th, and we don't wanna see that start on like September 5th, right? So, we just need to make sure we can work around.
Sooner I can get my approvals on hand and get started on that, the better, I guess.
Do we have the approval for the, to extend licensing agreement?
So, I've been working with another gentleman at Eversource. It'll be a new license agreement for, for this piece of it. We just learned about this last week, and then the date with the Washington Street Park Agreement will be an extension, and hopefully will include a provision for them to work with us on the Washington and Cross Street Bridge projects as well.
Well, if we get everything in order, we meet next Monday, and we meet June 5th, so we're happy to consider it.
Great, thank you. I will just point out as well, part of the reason we're asking for these, we did need some laydown space. I think staff suggested, instead of us using Davidson Park and tearing that up when we already have disrupted another area, it's best to continue to use that. So, you know, this ask is to minimize any impact to the park there. We are also gonna take up a little bit of space at the soccer club area, but we've been working with them, and they're minimal to us, using the spaces that we've been talking about, so.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming in. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Is there anything I need to be?
Can you start the housing production plan with us?
Yep.
One of our members needs to go, so I'm just gonna bounce around a little bit and talk about the housing production plan real quickly. So, I know, Mike, you weren't involved in this before, so I think we have, it's, it's up, due for an update next year, and I think Beth, you've got an estimate that was in our package to do it, so.
Yeah, so I thought I was gonna be here tonight asking for money, but it turns out that last Thursday, the state announced a new grant, grant funding that you can use towards housing production plans. So, I'm gonna first apply for that and see if we can get that money, and if not, we'll act as a money for a future meeting. But the idea is to use MAPC to do the update to the ones who worked on the Eversource thing.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, they were excellent, so, and it was, it's good that we get going on it, because it was kind of a long runway to get the community feedback. And the first round, you know, we hit a lot of low-hanging fruit, so I think this next round, we're gonna have to really dig in a little bit, a little bit deeper.
Do you wanna work on this, since you did it the last time?
Yeah, yeah, I'd appreciate that.
So, Beth, Mike will be our point person to assist on the housing production plan. Does anyone wanna help him, or?
I think, I thought when we talked about support, it was Mike and John.
Was it Mike and John? Okay, great.
Well, especially when you're not.
He's right here.
He's gonna get a lot of assignments tonight, I have a feeling.
Absolutely.
And then, Mike, just on committees, are you comfortable with staying on the same committees?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I would stick with the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Partnership Board. If there's anything anybody wants that I'm on, then, then, other than that, fine.
Okay, great.
Sorry, I have.
Thank you.
Carpool trolls tonight that I need to be there for.
All right, going back to the top of our agenda, Swim Winchester. Come up, Carol. How are ya? Thank you for waiting, sorry.
I am, no problem.
Can you just advance with the arrows?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Or this, okay, great, yeah, thanks.
I turned too soon.
What's it, John's seat?
There's lots of free seats tonight.
Pick your seat, any seat.
Anyway, thank you very much for having us. I'm Carolyn Chamu from 319 Highland Avenue.
David Dentley from Lake Street, so quite interesting to hear about the impending apocalypse.
Surprise!
Sorry, turns over.
Okay, so this is our six-month update. We were last here in October, so it's a little bit beyond that. So, just to summarize our progress in the last six months, it's just a, a brief update. I'm gonna focus mostly on our main project, of course, the, the design of the pool for Skilling's Road. So, we worked with Fenwick McCready Architecture, FMA, to complete a conceptual design for Skilling's Road. And it's a single-story version, and this fits on the 1.55-acre site that was conditionally approved for our use. The cost estimates we have now, we just received them, they came at the end of April, for the basic design of the building, including all the site work and a new parking area. Depending on features that are chosen, it'll be between 22 and 25 million in 2023 dollars. Adding onto that, there's, you know, sort of margins and adjustments, which have various, you know, other requirements, insurance fees and contingencies. That adds another six to eight million. So, the total construction estimate for the project would be 28 to 33 million dollars.
That's in today's dollars, right?
In 2023 dollars, yeah. So, so that's been our major focus, and I have a few slides showing images of the design. And then, at the end of the talk, I have about two slides to discuss the work we've been doing supporting the renovation of the Hall Memorial Outdoor Pool in Stonem. And for that, we're partnering with the Boys and Girls Club of Stonem and Wakefield, and working with Representative Day, Senator Lewis, and the DCR. So, just a reminder on the design project, that in addition to designing a building, we also did, sort of, we defined site and structural requirements. So, that really helped us work out the details of what was required to build the building. And throughout the process, we had community and town engagement for feedback on the site and the design options. So, I'm gonna present a few images here of the, of our sort of conceptual design. And then, I have at the end of the presentation that I won't present, but are included in the, in the packet that I sent. We have additional images for you to see. So, here's the site on the northeast corner of Skilling's Field, just to remind you where it is. Just north of the baseball field, next to the high school. The senior architect on the project from FMA is Gary Coccoluto, and there's a, a shot of the entrance from the parking lot of the, um, single-story pool. Here's how it lays out on the site. And you can see, we described this when we were last here in October with Gary, that we believe the, the best option for the additional 50 parking spots is to, to run a parking lot between the, the, the grass field and the, and the softball field. And this addresses some of the concerns of the neighbors, including emergency access, which then could potentially come off of Swanton Street directly across the, the, the Skilling's Field and not go through the neighborhood. It also preserves the grass field, shifting it over slightly, in order to, to accommodate the building and get it off of the site. So, the layout of the pool, now this shifts the building around 90 degrees from where, where you just saw it, but this is easier to see it in this view. It has the two pools, a large lap pool on the right, and then a smaller program pool that would be shallower and warmer on the left. And then, surrounding all these things, the entrance is on, on the lef, the far left. It enters near a community room and a fitness area, and then you would follow into the building for locker rooms, and then the mechanicals and support are at the far end. So, the projected timeline, there's, as I said, there, there are many other images, the additional materials, at the end. So, the, the timeline right now, we're sort of continuing a sort of an in-depth review of the cost estimate. We just met on Friday with the architect to sort of go over some of the preliminaries. And then, we're gonna be carrying out a strategic plan and project review based on that. And then, in the fall and winter, beginning the capital campaign feasibility assessment. So, then, our other project that we've been working on, that I wanted to present a little bit about, are the partnerships with the DCR Hall Memorial Pool renovation. Oh, it ended up a little light here on the gray, sorry. So, I'm not sure if you're familiar about the Hall Memorial Pool. It's an outdoor pool and splash pad located in Stonem on North Border Road, kind of, just a few miles, actually, from, from downtown. It provides an important summer aquatics facility for residents of the surrounding town, including Winchester, and there are many Winchester families that are members of that pool in the summer. However, it's a very old facility, built in 1949, with only minimal updates since then. And it's currently at the end of its useful life, and so it'll need to close unless it has significant renovation. And for that reason, that area is a sort of a priority area for attention by the DCR. Since 2014, so for almost 10 years, the pool's been operated by the Boys and Girls Club of Stonem and Wakefield, and they have an agreement with the, the DCR to do so, and they run all the programming, they run their camps in the summer and swimming lessons, and they, they hire the lifeguards and, and oversee the operation of the pool. So, knowing that it was nearing end of life, DCR commissioned a renovation feasibility study of that outdoor pool in 2019. So, we've, Swim Winchester's been in touch, you know, through our delegation with the DCR and Stonem Boys and Girls Club for many years about the future of that site. But we really sort of joined fully in 2022, sort of partnering with the Boys and Girls Club and the state delegation in regular, fairly regular meetings, right, to promote the renovation effort and working with the DCR. So, about a year ago, we worked with, with the Boys and Girls Club and our consultant, Isaac Sports Group, to sort of commission a review of the 2019 feasibility study, and sort of some additional sort of updates to it. And the goal of that project has been to develop a long-term vision for the renovated pool that will include features that enhance program for the community use. So, that it would include a 25-yard sort of course for recreation and club swim teams, that there would be a, a pool heater, so that it's easier to use for young children, and, and sort of in June and, and later in the summer. And that there would also be sort of zero entry at the shallow end for better access. So, we really support this project. We think it's a really important resource for the region, because an outdoor summer pool will benefit Winchester residents, and it'll complement the plans that we have for the Skilling's Field indoor pool. I mean, you could have programming that extends, starting in the summer and moving indoors in the winter. And then, that's the end of our formal presentation. We're happy to take some questions. And as I mentioned, there's about, you know, 12 slides after this of additional materials that have a lot more details about both, both of those projects.
Cheryl, do you have any questions?
I think this is really helpful, so I appreciate the, the update and the plans. One question, which I actually don't know necessarily who it's for, but in that design, in having the parking kind of wrap in between some existing fields, is that something that's within the provisional space that's been granted, or would that be separate?
I don't know that there's ever been like a true boundary drawn, just a kind of general area, I think, so I don't know how.
Right, it's definitely, it's.
Further than what we've kind of seen before in terms of what the space handles like.
Right, in terms of the, 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 the 1.55 acres that was sort of set aside formally for the building. But knowing that we need, would need extra parking, that, that's sort of the proposal.
Can you just go back to the slide of the, the layout of the Skilling's? So, the back wall of the structure that, you know, the neighbors are looking out at, what are they, what are they looking out to?
Um, I think I, I have it, I believe. Actually, I'm not sure I have it. So, these are just some of the other things. So, here's some outdoor shots. So, that, on the far left of this one, you can see the back wall. There's no windows, so there will be no light coming out. And we've definitely, yeah, tilted any, there's, I think there are no windows on there at the moment. And you can see even there's the, I don't, the kind of columns in front of the other windows, kind of.
Is there an estimate of how tall the structure is at this point?
I unfortunately do not have that. Do you remember?
I don't recall, so.
Yeah, it's slightly higher than, you know, a single-story house, obviously, because of the, the clearance needed. I'm sorry, I don't have that number.
And the pools are raised above ground, there's no digging, right?
No, there, there is digging now. Yeah, there'll have to be some digging with the single-story, yeah. In order to prepare the site as well, and dig somewhat for the pools.
All right. So, you've been at this a while?
Yeah.
Probably three years, four years at this point?
More than 10 years. Yeah, no, I think, yeah, yeah.
You know, it seems like you've made a lot of progress. You know, you're at a point where you, you know, it looks like you're looking at capital campaign feasibility. I guess, what are the next steps, and, you know, do you envision and ask of the town at some point? And when do you think that would be, and what it would be?
Right. So, my understanding is that we will definitely need to go to the town, we're, we're, I guess, the first step is that we would be happy to share, to meet with Beth and share some of the details of this, and sort of go into some of the, you know, the details of the site and the structure and things like that. I think there'll be, as far as I can tell, a series of asks to the town around permits for, for building on the site, and all the other things that one needs to do before construction. However, we also have to, I think, demonstrate, you know, the feasibility of raising the money before we can get too far with the town. So, it's sort of, things have to proceed probably in parallel. And we would like to get a sense, you know, by talking with Beth first and her team, sort of of the order of the steps in terms of permitting.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I think it's been mentioned before that there needs to be, this is parkland, so we would need to get, you know, the state legislature to sign off on it. I also think it's in the, is it in the flood plain?
It is, yeah. So, I know you're working with the HP, who's our flood consultant, which is great, but the, we still have one flood mitigation project left to do, which is the Morocco Culvert. And then, after that, we have a process where we have to petition FEMA to remap the entire town in terms of flood plain, which is probably a year and a half to two-year process with FEMA. So, we'll go to construction next summer, hopefully, for the Morocco Culvert project. And then, beyond that is the FEMA process. So, it's, we're, we're definitely a few years away on the flood plain piece of it to,
Right.
to move this area outside of the flood plain.
Right, right, right. So, the, the idea is that it's likely gonna be moving outside once that reassessment is made, right? Yeah, and we do understand that timeline, but we think we may have a timeline for the fundraising as well.
Okay.
So, I wanna ask maybe a bit about fundraising, fundraising as well as the land piece. So, the parking, Rich, thanks for asking the question, right? It's currently, it's grass, and you'd be, that design potentially is paving, what's currently grass. So, I imagine that's another use that the town would have to grant. In my understanding, when we put the turf field on Skilling's, that was contaminated soil from having previously been part of the transfer station. So, there's, so part of that site plan is potentially hazardous material or, or some sort of capping, and, because you're disturbing earth. So, I don't know if that's part of the design that you're.
It is, yeah, yeah. That, yeah, with the hazardous, yes, disposal of the, yeah.
And I certainly, having been involved in another campaign for a different board that I was on, you know, the ability to fundraise is predicated on the likelihood that the town's gonna. you know, the ability to fundraise is predicated on the likelihood that the town's going to grant and the state's going to grant all those things. So, you know, people are willing to write you a check.
Right.
You know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's the likelihood or the promise. So what's your point, like, what's feasibility mean for you? So if we don't have commitments of twenty-five percent of the project cost by calendar year twenty-four, we don't proceed, like, what, at present time, what's your working plan for go, no-go on feasibility and fundraising?
I don't know if we had those specific discussions or?
Right, we haven't had, so that, so we literally just got the sort of fundrais, you know, the cost in the last few weeks, right?
That's your next step?
Yeah, so that's, those are those strategic planning discussions that we've had, that we need to have.
I mean, most of our focus so far has been, you know, we've divided our fundraising into two phases. One is sort of the design fundraising portion, which is, you know, the fruits of that you see right now. And then the second portion is the capital campaign, once the design is fairly solid. So we've raised significant funds to, you know, go through the cost estimating process and the facility design process. And then we're going to, you know, take the deep breath and evaluate how best to do the capital campaign. And, you know, part of that includes, you know, revisions to this design, you know, striking the balance between, you know, feasibility, usability and cost.
Okay, seems like a long road to haul here. I mean, if you've been at it for ten years, I see you keep going. I don't know if there's any discussions, I mean, the Hall Pool, I mean, I think that's new from when you were here in the fall. I don't know if you're looking at alternative places or if that's just, you know, something to do while, you know, you continue to work on this.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So Hall's a very interesting complementary project. So Hall, if you've ever been there, it's an outdoor pool, it's fifty yards, leaks like a sieve. There are two hundred Winchester families who have a membership there in the summer. And we have been approached because we do have some expertise in aquatics programming. And we would view it as a near-term, sort of almost a primer, a pilot-type solution to verify that we truly can run the type of aquatic programming that we think we can. And then assuming we proceed with the Skilling's project, we'd then have, shall we say, an existing book of business that we could migrate to the Skilling's facility without having a lengthy startup period. So to Carolyn's point earlier, you could have a summer swim team in the outdoor pool and then in the colder months, you move that into your indoor pool.
Is there any possibility that that would become a year-round facility at the Hall Pool?
Not currently as planned, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think the most they're planning right now is similar to what like the Winchester Swim and Tennis Club does. They have an outdoor pool, but it's heated for sort of the shoulder season, if you will, to give you a better, you know, May to September. And although DCR has batted around a little bit, the idea of, you know, putting a bubble over it, that hasn't gained any traction and there's significant additional capex around that.
With your parking, what is the total, sorry, Michelle, what is the total acreage? You said it sits on one point five-five acres, what is the total acreage with parking that you would need?
I don't have that number either, I can't get that, yeah.
No, I was just curious, a bubble is not the same as your design with, you know, programming space and locker rooms, but, I mean, I can't imagine a bubble over an outdoor pool where, I swam as a kid growing up in Melrose, once got stitches from cracking my head open in the shallow end, story. I can't imagine a bubble to make that year-round-ish is, you know, twenty million dollars. I'd imagine that ask is easier. Leaking is its own challenge.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they'd have to heat the bathhouse as well, so the bathhouse is unheated as well. So there'd be a big renovation that would.
That thing's vintage too, for sure.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, we've visited a number of pools as part of our due diligence on this project. And we visited the Wayland Town Pool, which does have a bubble, which is an innovative way of doing it. But, you know, a bubble, of course, you know, leaks heat like crazy during the winter. It's a real concern.
Can I ask, I appreciate that we have sort of this six-month-ish update to our board. The town meeting seems to be the-ish part of that. In terms of like the sort of Skilling's neighborhood and things like that, are there sort of the same sort of routine updates, communication, just sharing what the, what's going on?
Yes, yes, we're in touch with them fairly regularly. So they've met with our consultant, they've met with FMA, and we send updates to them as do designs come out. And see them informally around town also.
Have they had, I know, I think you talked at one point about sort of the direction of, maybe the direction of the pool and changing that. Has there been any sort of inputs or?
Oh, you mean shifting at ninety degrees?
Yeah, I think it had been, it had been a change since earlier.
Right, right, yeah. And I think that would be one of the discussions we'd have with Beth's team. Sort of what, again, because the site is not, it's somewhat defined, sort of what was feasible there. But I think that that design can be flipped in any direction, right? It's just a matter of finding the site.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm just curious, like, if there's other feedback that you've heard and that you've sort of responded to in that time to think about, like, what those.
In terms of finding other sites or?
No, in, if sort of you're doing these sort of regular updates, if there's been any feedback that came through around that.
Of turning the?
Just general. So if you've been providing sort of updates to the neighborhood as well as the progress that's being made, if there's any feedback that you've heard and been able to take in that period? And referencing that, I think at some point that was sort of turning the design.
I'm not sure if the neighbors suggested turning the design. And I don't think I've discussed that with the neighbors. My understanding is that their preference is to keep it sort of as close to the railroad tracks as possible because it would get in the way of their view, right, across the field in downtown. But it's a good idea in terms of shielding more of the parking lot from car lights and things like that. I think it would again depend on what part of the space and whether the grass field could still be accommodated, right?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, this is school property, right? So there's a lot of people, part of the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'll say is, you know, I applaud you for your efforts. I mean, I grew up in a town with a town pool, I worked at it. I taught swimming lessons for ten years and the president of the Swim and Tennis Club in town. I mean, I think a town pool is a great asset, you know, especially, you know, for our swim teams and kids that like to swim. So, you know, if there's, it seems like you've got a long road to haul of many years and maybe it coincides with your fundraising, but if there's, you know, alternative options or locations, certainly, you know, if we could be of assistance, you know, we could certainly do that because this doesn't seem feasible. Just with the flood mitigation stuff alone, it doesn't seem feasible in a state legislature in an actment. You know, it doesn't seem feasible for a long time. And I think we need a facility much sooner than that, whether it's right over the line in a neighboring town or, you know, here in our town somewhere. But we're not talking, you know, we're talking maybe two, two and a half acres, maybe three max, I would think. You know, certainly, you know, if we can get creative, certainly willing to help, at least I am, to make this happen. Because I think to Michelle's point, with all those uncertainties, it might be a tough ask to figure out, you know, what, you know, what's your feasibility of actually raising the money to build this facility? I think it's a beautiful facility, I think it's well-designed, the facility itself, you know, with the two pools and what you have. Certainly, I know people on the board have a lot of swim experience, you know, that are helping and assisting in this. So I just worry about the site, I just, it seems complicated. I know we've had these conversations. So if there's anything, you know, outside the box that we can do to make this a reality and maybe somewhere else, you know, we're happy, or at least I'm happy to help with that, so.
And I guess, are you giving the same updates, thank you Beth for reminding us that it is school property? Are you giving these updates to the school committee and with what frequency?
Right, so we've, during the pandemic, we were supposed to meet with the school committee like in March of twenty twenty and that got canceled. And then throughout the pandemic, we sort of approached them and they didn't want one. We should now that we have sort of the full estimate, approach them again. I've definitely approached them within the last year and it was sort of like not, not invited to the meeting. They've been very busy, I think. But, yes, we'll reach out to the school committee too.
Well, thank Carolyn, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night. All right, next up, playgrounds.
Good evening.
Bob, back again. How are you, Pete?
Good, good evening, everyone, thanks for having us.
Thanks for your patience.
So a seven-page, I think I cut it down to seven-page report on our playgrounds.
That's just spreadsheet.
That's just a spreadsheet, yeah.
It's good reading though, right?
So what's going on, Pete?
So you've got the spreadsheet, I'll just start at the beginning. Thank you for putting money towards this safety study. We had really just been, I was working with the school department on a lot of issues that really had just started really presenting themselves in the, at the playgrounds. And we were working to get cost estimates for some of the more rougher areas. But that exercise that was done looking towards possibly putting some money into the, into projects brought it to your attention and the money from ARPA was used for that safety inspection of all of our playgrounds. That's the four major fields and all of the ones at the schools. The schools, some of them have two playgrounds, one for under K, K and below, and the other larger ones. So right after that, we were very successful in landing the safety consultant who went through them within the, within two weeks of getting the money. He put together reports, this is not the report. The reports we immediately used, we've put together a working group. It's myself, Mike Wise from the DPW, Nick Kacholfi from the Rec Department, Andrew Maron from the School Department. We're looking at all of them together to do what we have to do. Right after that inspection, we made a plan to make safe all of the more prominent problems with them. We did do that. Now we're working into doing some cost estimation for a lot of the other issues, the next tier or even that top tier. Some of our, most of our biggest issues have to do with fall landing zones and impact. We have two types of surfaces, we have rubberized surface and we have fiber playground mulch in a lot of areas. The playground mulch is more of an operations thing that needs to happen regularly. The rubberized surface comes to the end of useful life. There are some periodic maintenings that haven't really happened with ours that could happen to prolong their life. But sometimes that isn't going to help them either. So we have three schools that have really bad rubber. The Ambrose, just by sight, you can see it. The Lincoln School has lost its elasticity. You also have to replace some equipment there and that means cutting out the rubber and patching it. And then there is the Vincent Owen, which is a very, very large field where there's a lot of soft spots underneath in the base, which is an ADA issue. There's the surfaces releasing on some areas and there's a couple of pitted areas. So that's another place. The equipment there is in great shape. The problem with looking at something like the Ambrose for a complete replacement where that was opened in oh-five, now you're looking at almost twenty-year-old equipment, do you look at that at the same time? Obviously, you would want to do that so you wouldn't tear it up soon afterwards and patch it. So we're looking at all the, I'll step back then about the spreadsheet here. With help from the school department, we imported all the data from these reports, which was in different categories and it was tough to manage and work with. This, we're using and adding columns to get pricing more of an independent R condition assessment and try and make a plan for which first. So that being said, the next category that is not in this is we want to identify the manufacturer of each piece of equipment so that we can start to get pricing for the different pieces of equipment, keep it in the spreadsheet for future use when it does come of age, we know who to go to. A lot of our playgrounds are installed at the time of the building, but over time, pieces are bought, parent groups are very generous and put different pieces of equipment, but it's no longer the same type as was in there before. So that's part of what we're doing right now. Long end game is to, between the working group, make a cohesive way to keep this in plan. When things age out, we take care of it, determine whose responsibility. There's been a real disconnect on that over the years, so we're trying to pull that together. As I said, my next step is to take some of these more, the larger concerns right now and get some real costs to them, determine whether we need to bring in a landscape architect, you know, and we were working towards capital when you folks gave us that boost start by giving us the money for the safety assessment. So the next goal is to put together the group that has to be done, get a cost, speak with you folks about whether there's some money that, some other way or we continue down the path with the capital planning process or, and some pieces we just tried to find money for. But we've been off and running since it started, considering we have, you know, all of the other spring things going on. Our next other step outside of the money is where we do have the fiber chips, there is, that's more of a maintenance item, but it's one of the more across-the-board issues. We're going to be using some operation money, we're working with the school department, try to coordinate around their day to bring in truckloads and that's what it'll be. There's, easy guess, five hundred yards of fiber is needed around town for the mulch. The mulch is specific, I had to look it up myself, educate myself on it, the fiber. Playground mulch, the benefits of it are, it dries almost instantly, so use is there and it's engineered so that it splinters less. Those are the two benefits of it. Downside is it is a constant maintenance item, but it can easily be redone year after year if you keep up with it. So that's our next step is to handle that, so.
Yeah, the fiber materials Thomas, much cheaper to maintain. So rather than the rubber services, it's just a lot of money for the initial costs and a lot of money to maintain.
It's a hard time this time of year to try and get people to come in and start with prices and even to look at stuff because they're so busy booked with work right now. But we've had a couple vendors in to look at their piece of equipment and give us some pricing.
I would just note that we did last year funds using ARPA money, kind of master plan for Leonard Field. And so I know that, setting the school playgrounds aside from the municipal side, Leonard is one of the ones that's like the most issues that were identified, so.
And it doesn't look on paper as bad as it is when you go down there. Just some of the safety.
It's bad.
Quick fixes have taken on, it might only cite one piece of the equipment, but you've had to shut down a half to three-quarters of it to.
Yeah, it's unusable. Really, it's really unusable at this point, so. First, Pete, I want to thank you for taking this on. You, you know, you, you're kind of a one-man band for a lot of our facilities. And I think, you know, playgrounds might have been a little bit outside the scope of what you're used to doing. So I appreciate you, you know, leading this working group and creating it so that this doesn't, you know, kind of fall through the cracks again. But I think, you know, it sounds like to me, in reading this spreadsheet and just my personal experience having young children, the playgrounds in this town have kind of gone, you know, are tired. There are some of the original ones, Ambrose is the original one, twenty years old at this point almost. You know, they're neglected, they're well-used, they're well-loved, but, you know, without private donations, you know, they kind of haven't been maintained. And unfortunately for us, it's all kind of hitting us at once because this list has rendered several of our facilities, you know, unusable or unsafe by, you know, a vulnerable population. by, you know, a vulnerable population, uh, in our town, um, you know, that are looking just to have fun on a playground, so. You know, I think, to me, this, this rises up the list, we always talk about health and safety concerns at this table, especially when we're talking about ARPA discussions and things like that. You know, I can't think of a better use of some of that money, um, and to, to kinda correct these issues. And so, uh, we, we kinda did this on a couple of projects is, you know, we learn from our past mistakes, we, you know, we're gonna prevent those going forward and, you know, we're gonna use this money now as a stopgap measure to kinda, you know, get us to a position that we can maintain and manage the problem, um, and, you know, come up with a plan so that we don't, we're not in the same position, so. You know, I'm, all ears for what your committee comes forward, uh, it would be great to get some of this stuff moving faster. Um, you know, and if it means, you know, we're replacing a facility at Ambrose because we're gonna replace the field, um, the, 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 the surface, uh, and it's twenty years old and might as well replace it now rather than in two years, then I think we need to have that discussion. I don't know, Bob, in your, your past, uh, work, uh, if you've, you know, had to do any playgrounds, um.
I haven't done too many playgrounds myself, but, I mean, I've been a part of the community that has done a lot of them, um. You know, we, we always had funding through like a CPA account, you know, is how we did it in the past, um, communities. So there was always a playground getting replaced every year. It'd be a good idea to put, make a capital plan for playgrounds so that going forward, like you were saying, we don't make those mistakes going forward, we keep, Pete's done an, an excellent job, you know, classifying all the equipment, breaking everything down. So now that we have that type of spreadsheet, we can use that to make the plan going forward.
Absolutely. So, I mean, I'd be in favor of giving us a pretty big boost to get a lot of this corrected so that kids, you know, going back to school in the fall, you know, have safe structures to go on and, and the public, you know, has safe structures, uh, you know, to use. I mean, the Leonard one is probably the biggest issue, um, you know, the, the whole thing has been rendered, you know, obsolete at this point, uh, so. What are the next steps? You know, you're gonna meet with this group, when will we see you again and when will you, I think you have some, some, some estimates and, and a plan?
So, I, I have some budgetary estimates in there now, I've, I'm, as I said, I'm working with uh, a couple of vendors to try and get, you know, some costs for replacing certain pieces of equipment, some of the equipment isn't made anymore, so. If you gave me a month, I could probably be back here with some good information and, and some estimates for, you know, the worst of the areas. Uh, I do work closely with the school department, the two that really jump out at me from, is Leonard's and then the Ambrose, uh, surface, at least the surface, there might be a piece of equipment wanna change at the time, but, uh, or some repairs and like a replacement slide, not a fixture. Uh, and then the next tier for me would be the, uh, Lincoln School. But McDonald Field has some issues that are, you know, need to be, again, more of a fall hazard where pavement is too close to a piece of equipment, but then that pavement is ADA required, so what do you do? There's some thought, so that might be too, then to get going what we have and then maybe bring in a landscape architect to take a look at some of the issues and going forward as we build the playgrounds, you know, look harder into the surface, the warranty of the surface, what the recommended manufacturer maintenance is and, and keep that in plan as well, so.
Yeah, so I mean, I think this will coincide nicely, we have some other stuff that we're waiting on to consider, you know, in ARPA requests, you know, we've got, um, the roofs, we've got the
Windows.
The windows, uh, some other reports that we're waiting on, so, if we get everything in a giant package, you know, we put it all on the table. I mean, I think, you know, this is, this is right up there on the list, at least for me personally, so, um, you know, I think that would work out nicely, so I'd continue down your path, um, of what you're doing, um, but, you know, we gotta get this done, in my opinion ASAP, uh, especially some of these you know, facilities, so.
I agree, closing them down seemed to be more of a concern to people that they were there than the safety, so, we, we need to get things squared away and open back up.
Yep.
Having raised kids, I, I don't know what I would've done without the local park to
Right.
To wear them out for a while, so.
Any questions, Antea or Michelle?
I have.
No.
I have questions.
Thank you.
Um, I, I appreciate that you were able to pull this all together into a spreadsheet, it's really helpful to take a look at, um, and to take a look at school by school, uh, I think, you know, actually I walked by and I saw the assessment being done at Leonard, or it might've been one of the first ones, I was thinking of Friday morning, um, and I, and I, I watched as looked and noted like there's a zip tie there, right? Um, so even some of the things that I think that are in here that, that seem small are things that, you know, over time, um, have deteriorated and so it would also be nice to see in sort of this working group and whatever rolls forward is also understanding a plan for, plan for maintenance, um, and, I mean, like wood chips especially and just, you know, figuring out what is the, um, routine sort of re-upping of those, um, obviously, and if you're honest, things that, those dig out, right, those go, go flying, but, um, in reading through a lot of this, there's, you know, um, the distance at the bottom of the, of slides in many cases, um, and I know there are things that, uh, as a parent at Morocco, we noticed that like the, the climbing thing is now sufficiently roped off, um, it was not before, it was kind of known, you, you can't use that structure, but it wasn't roped off, so I do appreciate that, that has been like a pretty quick turnaround to, to block off things that are, um, you know, specifically and explicitly unsafe. Um, as it comes to also, uh, there is, and it's, I'm sure it's out of date by several years, but there was a fields report or, or master plan at some point, I don't know if that's something that's been sort of revisited and looking at, just say, I wanna say it had the ages of some of the playgrounds and some of that in it.
I, I wasn't aware of it, I, this is new to me dealing with the, with the fields, so, uh, and I'm learning a lot about it and I'm certainly gonna go look for it now.
I was, I was trying to pull it up and I, and I couldn't find it, but I think that that, um, it might be helpful also to look at if it does have things like the, um, the age of the playgrounds and, um, you know, knowing some of them were put in when the school was put in, um, poor Leonard was probably, I don't know, I don't know when, but I'm, you know, it's
They're probably out of college that
Yeah, for sure. For sure, they might be in grad, grad school, yeah, um, so, so also in just like being able to kind of collate that and seeing like as we prioritize, you know, Leonard and the Ambrose service and, and Lincoln, also thinking of like, are there playgrounds that can, um, that are more recent that can get those replacement parts because there's still a vendor versus playgrounds where you know, it's just our best bet is to, to raise it and see what we can do. I've heard there's also in some like Scandinavian countries, there's this like playgrounds of unsafety, which it's some levels are just like, oh, just, you know, go in the complete, um, opposite direction, but I, I, I you know, it's, I'm glad that we had this assessment done because it brought to light a lot of things that I think people had seen and maybe hadn't put a, a finger on, even though it's obviously like a, you know, it's, it's gonna be a big long project to, to get them up to speed and I, I, I agree with Rich that this is, um, you know, we already kinda had our some ARPA funds looking towards that in Leonard, but, um, this is a really good opportunity to look at how some of those can be spent, cause it really deals with, um, sort of these areas that you know, you're talking about funding from the pandemic, these areas that really shifted to us being outside and, and using spaces outside and you know, trying to put wear, we're, we're putting a lot of wear on those spaces and sometimes it's, you know, we don't want to do that and also create risk as you're going through that, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, for example, Ambrose, you know, it's a twenty-year-old playground almost, uh, so if, you know, having two costs, you know, it's gonna cost X to replace the whole thing, uh, versus, you know, the cost just to replace the, the, the flooring and, you know, to update all the equipment there, I think seeing those, both those numbers might aid the discussion, you know, it's, cause maybe it's, you know, it's twenty years old, it might be advantageous to, to just replace the whole thing at this point, um, so, uh, with this opportunity that we have, so.
I ask a question, do, do you have a cost for the Leonard, you said that you guys have looked into replacing it?
Yeah, I can send you that, it, it was a, a full master plan, so it looked at, um, a new play structure, a new like pavilion where the concrete structure is now, um, and it looked at a new basketball court, it's a, it broke down costs for each of those kind of items.
You know, pickleball courts or something?
Especially pickleball courts, yeah, um, so I can afford that a lot of stuff to you people.
I was just sitting here amusing myself remembering, uh, I grew up across from the old Vincent Owen School and I remember when that we got the great dome that was out there, anybody remember that? To me, back then it looked like it was thirty feet high and it probably was, and my brother had fallen from the top and broke his arm on that.
Well, having two kids
Full circle.
Yeah, having two kids break wrists on two different playgrounds in town, one a VO and one a gin, I can tell you, uh, you know, it'd be nice to, to get these
I'd say something about your kids, Rich, but, yeah.
All right, well, one was trying to dunk a basketball on a seven-foot hoop, the other one was climbing, so.
Can I ask a, a question, I made an assumption that Lynch wasn't on here because Lynch is, it
Yes.
Being done, did they look at that in the assessment or?
No, we didn't bother because it's getting
Are there, is there any
We walked through to look and make sure that there weren't any, uh, broken structures or loose bolts, we did that on that one.
Okay, so there's no sort of, as there were at some other schools, like immediate safety concerns that needed to be addressed?
Isn't Parker's getting a new structure during, not, not during this project?
I don't think they're gonna have a play structure.
No, I thought they were.
They, they have one in there now that's been since the last, uh, renovation, uh, the last swing space used, the preschool uses it now. That was assessed as well, so, that's in the report, it's not coming out, it's wedged in between all the modulators.
All right, so we meet again on the, well, next week, I think that's too soon for you, but the fifth and the twenty-sixth of June right now, so maybe aim for that June twenty-sixth.
Sure.
Meaning, um, great, have that information.
Will do.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, Michelle, do you have anything?
I didn't, actually.
All right, um, rolling on, so, we're down a couple of members, um, I did talk to John Fallon before he left uh, for, um, Ireland, but he is, uh, just on committee assignments. So, if we could just go through this real quick, um, so Mike wanted to stay on the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, Michelle, just so you're aware, we kind of appoint a member to be the kind of the liaison for each committee to kinda come back to the board report, you know, attend their meetings as needed. Um, some are voting members on some of these committees, so, um, so Mike wanted to be on the Affordable Housing Trust Committee again. The Audit Advisory Committee, Michelle, you're a member of that, correct? We appointed you, didn't we?
Yes, you did, so I'll stay.
So you wanna stay on that and we can bump John off of that, I don't think he'd be upset about that, um, or do we have, cause we don't have two, do we have two members?
You need to.
Do we have?
So I'll just replace Mariano.
I didn't know if he was a truly backup.
Then I need to be replaced as a community member.
All right, we will do that.
Great.
Thanks Patty, way ahead of us. Antea, you're on committee on names, I don't think you've had a meeting yet, but, maybe someday you will.
We're ready to name something.
Field Management, you are the primary on field management?
Mm-hmm.
Do you wanna stay on that?
Oh, yeah, I can stay on that.
Okay, and we had John as the backup, I don't know if anyone has an issue with that. All right, uh, Housing Partnership Board, Mike wanted to stay on that, I was his backup. I'm on the Cable Advisory Committee, uh, which doesn't meet very often. And then John, uh, when I did speak to him, he was, um, he's been on capital planning for one year, uh, he wanted to stay on capital planning. I think that makes sense, given his engineering background and, and what he does for work, so, um, so we can leave him on that unless anybody else objected to that. I am the Chamber of Commerce Liaison, um, I'm happy to remain doing that. The Conservation Commission, uh, we had Mariano as the liaison with Mike being the backup, um, is anyone interested in that or? I can ask Mike to be the, the, uh, liaison?
Maybe if Mike wants to be the primary liaison, I'm happy to take the backup on that.
Council on Aging, uh, Mike has been the primary on that with John being the backup. I assume he wants to stay doing that, unless somebody else wants to jump in on that? All right, hearing none, he's stuck with it. I've been the Disability Access Commission Liaison, I'm happy to remain doing that unless somebody else wants it. Energy Management Committee, Mariano.
I'll take it.
Michelle? I'm gonna leave Mike as the backup.
Sure.
All right. Uh, the Permanent Streets Committee, uh, Street Tree Committee, I've been the liaison for that, that may seem a, a little bit more action maybe this year.
I think so, yeah.
If somebody else wanted to jump on that, I think they're looking to revitalize that committee and maybe, you know, approach town meeting with some type of bylaw, I'm happy to do it if nobody wants it. I've kinda been the liaison for the Planning Board, I'm happy to do that as well unless somebody else wants it.
Are you like, just gonna start auctioning these off?
I know, right?
You're moving real quick, so, um, I'm happy to take the, the street triggers.
Are you? Great. Sorry, I didn't mean to move quickly. Am I gonna skip T-TAC for the second? Uh, Wildwood Cemetery, John's on that, unless somebody else wants it, he was happy to stay on. Winchester Hospital, Leah Pilot, um, I think our, we don't even need to negotiate that this year.
Yeah.
So I'm happy, yeah, so I'm happy to stay on that, and does somebody wanna join me in helping?
Sure, I'll join.
Great. And then these are working groups, uh, that, uh, some meet, some don't, um, but we've got our field master plan, um. Antea, you were doing that, were there any meetings or anything?
No.
I don't think so, okay.
The elusive fields master plan.
There, there is a, there is some sort of plan that lists all of our fields.
There is, and I will send it to you.
Oh, super, okay. I know it's in, I've read through it. So I'm happy to stay on this fields master plan should, should it come around and hit its ten years soon.
Flooding Drainage, Drainage Stormwater Management Working Group, does that still an active working group, Beth?
I don't think so.
All right.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, could you explain that one?
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe when we were, you know, twenty years ago and we were more in the phase of developing the flood mitigation program, that was more active, but
All right, I'm gonna remove that.
We're at the ends of that, yeah.
The MBTA train station, there's not anything to do with this, I mean, we get, we go, we go up to
No, I mean, that was very active during the design phase and maybe as we get towards the end of construction, there might be some additional, you know, kinda sign-offs that we need, but, um, not too much for now.
All right, I'm happy to stay on doing that. Stay of the Town Committee, so this was the Override Committee, uh, way back, I don't know, is that still, that's not active at this point anymore either. We could take that off Patty as well. I'm sure we're doing some house cleaning here.
Is that something that you wanna continue for, or just, um, pull it together when it happens?
Yeah, I think I would like list it maybe at the bottom, but not
Would you use it for CPA?
We would use CPA Study Committee?
I don't know, just rename it or something.
So we're gonna, I think we're gonna talk about that our next meeting, what the, the next steps are on that process. And I envision some committee probably being formed to study that and make recommendations. So hold that thought.
Held, it's fine.
Town Center Initiative Steering Committee, uh, I don't know if that
Are we still doing that?
Still, I mean, I guess it loosely exists, can I live?
I mean, was that for the, the tool study that we did with the, I mean, so we have, uh, we've got our apply for the, the pay board for our five hundred thousand dollar year mark, so, I mean, maybe that has a little bit more work going forward, or maybe we just bring everything to the full board for conversation, we'll have a, you know, public outreach process over the next
Why don't we, we'll plan to bring that to the full board and then if we need a committee, we can go from there. Same thing on the Town Center Parking Committee, I think that was kind of the same. Thing, we can cross that off for now. And see where we land, and then I think we can reformat it, reformat it. Uh, Transfer Station Working Group.
Weren't we?
Are they?
Keeping Mariano on that?
So.
There was something that we were.
Weren't they studying, looking, aren't we looking at pay as you throw?
We're looking at pay as you throw, yeah, and so, um, right now we have Enzo working with us, but if there's.
I can do something. I mean, I probably need to read up on it.
You're a fast reader. You're on it.
Sure. If you can get Mariano to stay on, that'd be great, too.
Yeah, I vaguely recall that we.
He's working on the sustainability stuff.
Okay, I was like, there's something that we just sort of kept him going with.
The Cultural District, I think I'm like the liaison, but it's kind of a full board, so. Patty, if we need a specific person to appoint, do we need a specific person on that? The Winchester Cultural District?
No.
Okay.
Are you part, are you on the managing, um, partners?
Not that I'm aware of.
Unless they put them down tonight.
They're not aware of, so we can cross that one out, too.
Actually, I know that they asked.
They asked to have a.
Have a representative.
Oh, did they?
Um, last year, I think that's why we added it.
Yes.
I mean, I'm happy to do it.
I can be your backup, Rich, see if there's ever a meeting.
Alright, thank you, Michelle. And then these are the Master Plan Implementation Committee Subcommittee's that I think has not really gone too far, if I.
We did, uh, appoint a youth representative.
We did?
The Planning Board, yeah.
Do we have a Master Plan Implementation Committee at this point?
My understanding is that there were lots of applications from juniors and seniors in high school for the youth representative and there were no applications from.
You don't, can you?
We should just let them plan it then. It's their town, it's their future. Go with the youth.
Absolutely.
So, I think the only thing is, if somebody wanted to replace Balancing Development and Preservation, Mariano on that part of it, I don't know if these are active or what the plan is. I know it kind of took a back burner when, uh, we lost your town planner, so.
And you realize that this is a really new, um.
Very new, is it, like six months?
Yes. And these were, this was the subcommittees that they had asked, Thea had come to us asking.
Yeah.
Can we revisit, I'm not, I'm not saying I wouldn't be willing to potentially do that, but can we revisit that, that's, those are the right groups and?
Yes.
So there, there were the groups set by the Planning Board.
Okay.
We had no say in that, they just offered us a spot on the committees.
I'm hap- I'm happy to hop into the other one since I think we have chosen a youth representative, so.
Alright.
Yay.
That might be wrapped up.
Great. And I've been serving on the Retiree Health Insurance Advisory Committee.
I'll go on that if you want.
Okay.
I was, I attended some of those meetings as FinCom.
Great, you're on.
It's, how is it, it's only added to this list? Cause you, Select Board's always had a person, no?
It's a permanent.
Now we made it a permanent committee as of fall town meeting.
Used to be a town, used to be a town meeting committee and then they request a meeting on a permanent.
Got it. Okay.
So you want me to remove your name, Rich, and add Michelle?
Yes, please. Alright, I think that's all of them for now, right Patty?
Yes.
Okay, so you gave us a clean sheet and if we need to make any changes, we can do that?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I'll have it for you for Monday.
Perfect.
How often does retiree health insurance meet? Since I just signed up for it.
It's like.
Every week.
Yeah. Once a quarter, a couple times a year?
It's so, um.
Uh, every s- six months, maybe? It depends if there's an issue, um, you know, before the board, like if they're changing health insurance or something like that, but.
Fair enough. Right, okay.
They were meeting more regularly because they were actually trying to get the town meeting, uh, approval done, so now they're a permanent committee, I don't expect them to meet as much, maybe once a quarter, maybe once every six months.
Okay.
Stacy, uh, runs it, so.
Okay, I'm still good, I was just curious.
You're good. Alright, so I think that's, takes care of that for now. So the only other thing I had on here was Select Board Goals and Work Plan. You know, we can do all the goals right now with the three of us, we want. Set the work plan, you know, whatever you guys envision.
While you were out, yeah.
While you were gone, this is what we took, um, but you know, I think I, I mentioned this, um, you know, the idea is on that June fifth meeting to come in with some, you know, a, a plan, I'm gonna meet, Thea and I are meeting tomorrow, uh, to discuss it and then, um, you know, it'd be great, um, Anthea and Michelle, if maybe you could take the lead on some of this, um, process. And goal setting, uh, and maybe run, run with this, so. You know, once Anthea and I meet, I'll take a step back from it and then, um, look to the two of you to maybe, um, you know, orchestrate this endeavor as best you can with this hotly crew of people.
That is a constraint.
Not a lot of talent to work with, but you know, it's, it's a body. Alright.
That sounds fine.
Uh, so just, you know, as I reminded, uh, John before he left, uh, that, you know, that June fifth meeting, we weren't gonna do anything too substantial while he was gone, but that June fifth meeting, we would hit the ground running, kind of hit the reset button on the, on the Select Board here. Any questions on that? Any thoughts initially?
I think it sounds great.
Great. I look forward to your leadership on it. Uh, I appreciate you both for helping out with that. Uh, I think the only other thing is our consent agenda.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Um, at number five is, uh, just approving George now for the special municipal employee, is that related? I just hadn't seen us do that for Board of Assessors before.
So George, um.
He won, he won his election.
Yeah.
So what he has done is that, um, he hired his company, he's not only garage removal, but also moving furniture, and he'd already gotten a contract with Parkers to move furniture around.
Okay.
So, um, and there's all random different items that he does for the town already in existence. So what this does is this allows him to continue doing that, and because it is a three-year term, I, uh, we've add it to March twenty twenty-six.
Oh, super.
So it's a state requirement.
Yeah, oh, that makes sense. I just hadn't seen us with previous assessors, um, plans.
Right, exactly, yeah. It's only because of what he's done all his life with the town and now he's a different, you know, working within a different layer.
Any questions?
Uh, given that we need a vote to approve minutes, I normally wouldn't approve minutes of meetings that are ten, but I think I can give us our third vote to get item number six done.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, make this a motion.
I did a requirement, my question. Until March thirteenth, it says March sixth.
Alright, so if there's a motion, we can approve the consent.
Uh, maybe approve the consent agenda as posted for Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bye. Said everything, Beth?
I think that's it.
Anything else you wanna do? Alright.
That's for tonight.
Well, thank you both. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Wen Cam.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Um, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.